Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a resumed session of the Wakefield School Committee. We began our meeting tonight at 6:00 and went into executive session, and we are now coming back for the public session. So, thank you all, and welcome. Called the meeting to order, and first point of business, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would then like us to read the Wakefield Public Schools' mission statement. "The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests." Next, public comment period, open for any member of the public who would wish to address the school committee on any matter. Yes? Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
You could come forward and introduce yourself, your address, and welcome.
Okay. So, hello, I'm Amy Lehman. I live at 10 Fox Road in Wakefield. And I don't, I know I get two minutes, but I have statements from two other parents, so it might run a little longer, and I hope you'll accept that.
Certainly.
Because it's not me, it's them talking.
Okay.
So, we're here, we, virtually, are here to talk about the Learn Anywhere. We have some feedback we'd like to share with the school committee and Dr. Smith. And the first statement, I'm going to read the two statements and then read my own.
Okay.
The first statement is from Caitlin Burbridge. She asked me to read that, "After reading what would be discussed in tonight's agenda, I got very concerned that no critical comments on the Learn Anywhere program were present in the presentation. I have heard many complaints about the program, and I have some major concerns about the program as it currently exists. My primary concern is that the curriculum and activities do not coincide with what a full day of learning is in school. I have seen the assignments, and write a paragraph on whether or not you prefer to live in Massachusetts or Florida, along with play prodigy for 15 minutes, is not a full day of learning for a third grader. There is no enrichment, no collaboration, or interaction with classmates. Where is the teacher, if the student has a question? Where is the class discussion about these topics for enrichment purposes? How are these activities moving the students' progress towards grade level standards? If it's just a writing assignment that is never discussed or talked about, wouldn't that make the assignment busy work? Schools are more than just assignments. Boiling down a full day of school to a paragraph of writing and 15 minutes of computer math problems is not the quality education I expect of the Wakefield School District. Given that the students miss more than a week due to snow days, that is an entire week that our children are doing busy work instead of well-thought-out enriching activities that I moved to Wakefield for. I am wholly disappointed in this program, the way it is administered, the level of assignments, and the lack, and the lack of interrogation into the curriculum." I can leave this if anyone wants to review it. The other is by email, because I didn't have time to print it, and I apologize. Is, I'm going to read this as Riannon Rossi. She's a Walton parent, and she says, "Hello, my name is Riannon Rossi, and I have two kids in the Walton School. One is in first grade, and one is in second. My daughter in second grade is currently on an IEP, and currently receives numerous accommodations for math, speech, reading, and social skills. I'm speaking because I feel that students on an IEP are not being represented in the Learn Anywhere program presentation before the school board tonight, nor are they being considered in the implementation of the Learn Anywhere project in general. On any given day, I struggle to help my daughter do any homework assignments, so I'm not sure how I can then assume the responsibility of teaching what is supposed to pass as a day of school. Teachers are unable to teach my daughter in a way that makes effective progress. That is why she's on an ed plan. She needs specialists with training to help her academics. I have no background in education, and my daughter is incapable of doing or even finding these assignments on her own. So, how am I supposed to get these assignments completed? Why does the school board not consider snow days important enough to be made up? Every single day that my daughter spends at school is imperative to her success. I can tell that missing just one day, being out sick, has an impact on her. Missing six days of in-school learning is a huge loss for students struggling to maintain grade-level work. So what is the resolution for parents unable to help their child complete less assignments? And what is the resolution for students missing out on much-needed in-school learning time, especially the segment of students on an ed plan?" So that was Riannon. So here, here's me. Hello, again. For those of us just joining, my name is Amy Lehman. I am a Wakefield parent with two children in the Wakefield Public Schools. I have a typically-developing second grader at the Walton School and a kindergarten at the Woodville School, because there was no room for kindergarten, as we know, at Walton. That'll change next year. My kindergarten daughter is on an IEP. I am here tonight to share feedback on the Learn Anywhere project, specifically the distance learning on canceled school days, which will be presented later this evening as item 10A. I felt it important for me to speak tonight because the presentation contains many favorable quotes from stakeholders, but does not contain any constructive criticism that myself and other concerned parents sent to the school committee and Dr. Smith. While I do think it's wonderful the program had many success stories, there were unfortunately many families whose children truly struggled with the Learn Anywhere assignments. My concerns, which were sent to you, the school committee, on January 26th, have not changed. They are as follows. The current design of the Wakefield's distance learning on canceled school days does not resemble the scope and depth of learning provided in a classroom lesson. There is no social-emotional component. The current assignments lack consistency across grade levels. With regard to the reading and writing assignments, the parameters are unclear versus the math assignment, play addition blocks for 15 minutes, which is clear. For math, Pearson actually offers online and blended learning solutions. Couldn't the district partner with Pearson to create a better product incorporating higher-order thinking, thus replacing the online math games? I understand students love their screen time, however, I'd prefer to see online math games offered as a reward or extra credit. Some assignments had a guesstimate on completion time. This should take less than 30 minutes to complete. Well, what takes one student 30 minutes may take another 60 minutes, so are the deliverables measured by time of completion? How do we know the program is successful? This is a question that I've asked numerous times. And we were told that the school department will regularly complete a program audit to assure, ensure that students engage with quality curriculum-based assignments and that student learning is commensurable with a regular school day. So I'm curious if an audit has happened, and if so, could the quantitative data be shared with the stakeholders? We were also told that there would be a parent survey and a follow-up forum, and to my knowledge, neither of that has happened. I also have many special education concerns, especially with compensatory services being pushed to the extended school year program. If a student is on an IEP requiring assistance to access the curriculum now, a makeup session in July is counterproductive. And merely extending the due date is not going to solve access and support issues. While I'm not here to advocate to keep students in school until late June, I do feel strongly that these homework-type assignments will never replicate the social-emotional benefit of a makeup school day, especially at the elementary level. And as a taxpayer, I look for value, and I do not agree with fully funding a 180-day school year and only receiving public school services of 174 days this year. If anything, I would have been really favorable with a hybrid approach, where the distance learning on canceled school days program went into effect after three weather-related school closures, so we'd all still know the last day of school. I know that's really important to a lot of parents, especially ones that travel abroad or in the summer. In closing, I'd like to thank Dr. Smith, Doug Lyons, and the Special Education Director Lynn O'Neill. They took the time to meet with me in February, and we talked a lot about my email and some small nitpicky changes that I had, which changed immediately, and I do appreciate that. And I do appreciate the time that the principals and staff took to listen and respond to the parents' feedback as we were working through the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. If you would mind leaving those for us, or if you could forward them, that'll our electronic.
Yes.
We'd certainly like to incorporate.
I'll put them in email, and I'll talk with your parents, so.
That'd be great. That'd be terrific. Thank you very much. Yep, thank you. Good evening. Okay. Item number six, the Student Advisory Council. We have Akaya here with us tonight.
Hello.
Well, how's everything going at Wakefield High School?
Very well. So, last week, the junior class participated in the Yellow Dress Performance, which brings awareness to relationship violence. And tomorrow, at 7:00 PM, in the Galvin Auditorium, the WHS band and orchestra will have their first, their last concert of the season. This week at the high school is Diversity Week, which is hosted by the diversity leaders and the Gay-Straight Alliance members, and it's present to celebrate the diversity in our school and in our community and beyond. This week and next week at the high school is AP Testing Week, so good luck to everyone who's AP testing. Recently, senior parents got a letter from Mr. Metropolis regarding the expectations for their last weeks in school and graduation. On Saturday at 7:00, the Galvin, at the Galvin, there'll be the Wakefield High School Acapella Concert. May 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00, at the Albion Cultural Exchange will be the AP Art Show. Junior Prom is on Friday, May 18th, at Montvale Plaza. Does it, no, May 18th.
Oh, junior prom.
Yeah, junior prom, sorry.
Okay.
Tuesday, May 22nd, the Wakefield High School Choral Concert will be held at the Galvin Middle School. And a last piece of information, we sent out a survey to seniors who were going to prom, and 90% of seniors attending the prom will actually be participating in the post-prom activities, so that was nice to hear. Yeah, that's all I got.
Awesome. Well, that's quite, that's quite a list.
Quite a schedule, yeah.
Indeed, a very busy, very busy schedule, very busy time of year. Anyone have any thoughts or questions for Akaya? Well, again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number seven, Consent Agenda. We have a motion.
Will the school committee approve the minutes of the April 17th, 2018 Special School Committee meeting, and the minutes of the April 25th, 2018 Regular School Committee meeting, as presented?
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Budget items, moving along. Mr. Piffling, end-of-year report, FY '17.
Good evening. Many of you probably know this, but annually, the business office has to submit a report to the Department of Education, listing all of our expenditures for the year. This takes into account all benefit costs that are paid by the town, money that we share with the town regarding DPW work, all of our expenditures, all of our grant expenditures, all of our revolving account expenditures, so it's a, it's a full assessment of what we spend every year, and also all of our revenues. When I do that report, I send it into the Department of Education. It takes a couple of weeks to put the report together, and after it's been submitted, I have to have an auditor come in, which is Powers and Sullivan, excuse me. Powers and Sullivan is our auditor for the town and the schools. They come in and audit that report. There are certain things that they're looking for specifically around things that we may get reimbursed on, so the Department of Education wants to make sure that we've reported accurately on those, but they, they check the entire report over, and then they give us an audit report, so I'm required to share the audit report with you. In the audit report, there were two significant findings this year. The first finding was around grant revenues and expenditures. I had reported in my report that certain grants that should have been reported as federal grants were reported as state grants. I'm sorry, they should have been reported as state grants, and I had them in there as other, other, other grants, both on the revenue and in the expenditure side. Also, I missed a line in my spreadsheet of $20,000 grant expenditure that wasn't in the report, so somewhat significant, but that's what they do the audit report for. I do amendments and send them into the Department of Education. The other significant finding is a finding that we have every year. They're supposed to be agreed-upon procedure between the town and the schools as far as how they let us know what expenditures they paid for. And how that works is they give us a percentage of the Park and Rex, the Department of Public Works Field Guys, and I'm drawing a blank on what they're called, but Dennis Fazio's group.
Parks and, Parks and Rex, is it? I'm not sure. DPW.
DPW, so all the DPW guys, all the maintenance, everything, they give us, they charge us a percentage of the actual cost. It might be 30%, 40%. I don't actually recall the number. I just take their numbers and put them in my spreadsheet. But they're supposed to be an agreed-upon procedure that we, as a school, you, as a school committee and the town, both agree that we are going to follow the same practice every year, and we both agree that it's a fair practice. Just something that hasn't happened. They've, they've always been very open with their numbers, but we just haven't come to an agreement on how that should be written up. So, every year, it remains a finding and something that we may want to look at this year. Maybe I'll work with Mr. Gill on that. But those are the only two findings in the report, which, no, that you ever want any findings, but this is probably in my six time doing this, this is probably the least amount of findings I've had, so I feel happy with it. You know, again, you never want to have any findings, but I feel at least happy that we went, I think, from like seven findings last year down to two. So, that's my report on that, unless there's any questions.
Mr. Lehman?
Could you just explain this other, this other matter, the indirect cost rate? I think I understand it, but I just want to make sure.
So, one of the things that the auditors are required to do is to report whether we had any indirect costs charged off to grants. We're not supposed to, so they look to make sure we don't, and then they have to report that we, that we did or we didn't, and they reported that we didn't, so we were in compliance. But they have to put it in the audit report for Desi, saying that they looked at that specifically.
I see.
And we follow the regulations.
Okay.
So, it's not a finding, it's just, it's a chuck off the box, right?
Checking off the box, yeah.
Exactly.
Excuse me, any other comments or questions for Mike?
Let me, I will just make one, that this is, Mike is very humble in this report, and I know I have said this in the past, but it certainly goes without saying, this is an extraordinary amount of work to put together this, the end-of-year report. It is, it is a lawful requirement, which has deadlines and timelines and all sorts of connections to it, but it is a huge volume of work. The state collects all of this data, and that's what they use to help produce things like, you know, all of the data goes into the, to the cherry sheets and the comparative data for, for net school spending and teacher salaries and administrative costs and lots of things. It's incredibly valuable in, for the state to use in gathering information, but it's a huge amount of work. Then the fact to only have two findings, I would, I would echo to report Mike's comments, if we can continue to eliminate that, or to continue to reduce the number of findings, I think, continue, kudos to Mike and even certainly Dr. Smith and the team. You know, somewhat, you know, auditors are paid to find things, so when we fix these two, they'll find two more. I mean, that's what they're supposed to do, so. That's a little tongue-in-cheek, but certainly, it's a huge amount of work, and to miss one, something rather insignificant with reporting on a different line, which is just legitimately a mistake of carrying one cell to another. Finding number two cannot rest with the business administrator, that must rest with the school committee and the town. We have to fix that. That's not, that's a finding on us, not necessarily on the business manager's work, so we need to recognize that we should be working toward, and that maybe that's something we want to talk about as a priority for the year, to initiate that, that agreement between the town and the school department over, over the cost of, cost of town and municipal services. But I would like to just, to really congratulate Mike and your, and your business team for this work.
Thank you very much. I hope there's not two more errors to be found.
They'll, they'll find them.
They will, they will.
Continue, Mike. Do you? Business reports?
The business reports, they're in the packet. These are through April 30th. Nothing dramatic to report that hasn't already previously been reported. Certainly, the special education tuitions is something that we've been discussing probably since October, so it's well-informed for everybody that those numbers remain where we had projected them to be. Salaries are coming back in the line. They were a little high for a while, but they're coming back in the line, and that has to do with probably some overencumbrances in certain lines, but everything seems to come into line there. Special education transportation is coming into line. I do need to do a little bit more work. We've, we've done our first pass at reducing some purchase orders and doing some analysis. Certainly, that's where May and June really are our crunch time to make sure that all of our purchase orders, requisitions, and accounting are taken into account. Snow days are one of those things that really push our, not our school year out anymore, but some of our placements, they do still make up snow days, so while I may have encumbered them for a February month expenditure, they may now be a June expenditure, so we do need to clean those up, make sure we know what the last day of school is for every placement. So, Ms. O'Neill's department has been working with the, with the placements to find out what their last day of school is, so we can make sure that all of our requis, our requisitions and purchase orders are accurate. Other than that, there's really not much to report different. Our deficit is, right now, is, at the end of April, was $407,000, and Mr. Callanan asked me earlier today how we, what our plan is to make that up. We certainly, we have the $175,000 from town meeting last night from the Special Education Stabilization Fund. We have some revolving account transfers we need to do from some tuition accounts. Wakefield Academy has not had their charge back yet for utilities and services, so those are some of the things that happen every year. I usually wait until near the end, but those should bring everything back into line. So, that $407,000 deficit, thanks, thanks to the town folks of Wakefield last night for approving the stabilization transfer, that really helps, and that will help us get to the end of the year with a, a black line instead of a red line, so. Any questions on the, on that section of the reports?
Mike, can I assume that the, that the transfer from grants hasn't completed either? You mentioned revolving funds.
There's, there are, there's about $20,000 in the IDEA grant that is being charged off to salaries in the local budget right now that needs to be transferred over to the IDEA grant, and I've sent the request to Ms. Pond to make that transfer in the next payroll cycle, so that should happen. So, that's, that's 20,000, like I said, there was, it's 407,000, 175 is, is from the stabilization, and then the revolving accounts and the grant account that, the 20,000 and the IDEA grant account that needs to come over to, come off the local budget and go on to the grant. And Ms. O'Neill and I are looking at the grants closely also, especially the IDEA grant, to see if there's more money we might be able to move around to help offset the 407,000.
Okay, thank you.
I also do have, when we get to the revolving accounts, there is, there is still a slight balance in the circuit breaker account, but when we get the fourth quarter payment, there will be a slight balance in the circuit breaker account, so we, we might have about $100,000 there also, which, which could benefit us if we, if needed, so. There are also, I should report, there are also two students who were in out-of-district placements that came back to us on May 1st. They're not large placements, they're not heavy, heavy dollar amounts, but every little bit helps, and May and June tuitions for both those students will be helpful. And there was, sadly to report, there was a child who was in a special education placement who passed away last month, and, not that that should go in the business reports, but it is a financial, has financial implications for the budget, but very sad. I had met the boy a couple of times when he first moved in, he was a sweet little boy, That's it on the, on the business, unless there's more questions on the front page?
Any questions for Mike on business reports? Amy?
When you say, "Two students are coming back," and it's not, they're not like huge placements, what do you mean by that?
There were two students, I don't know if I can actually name the placement, location? No, there were two, okay, there were two students who were out, out-of-district placed, and they are coming back to Wakefield Public Schools to be educated at the Wakefield Public Schools.
So, I think what you meant, I think what you meant is financially.
May and June tuition that was anticipated for these two students will no longer be needed.
Because like when you said, they weren't, like, I don't know if you said huge, like, it's not a huge.
Financially.
Financially, yeah, it was not, educationally, I don't, I don't know what that placement is or what their specialty is.
Okay.
It's more that the, the cost of that placement was not a residential, per se.
Oh, okay.
It was not a, a very large.
Not an expensive place.
20,000 or 50,000, or that?
Again, I just heard about it last week, so I don't have specifications, specific, specific information on how much these two students are coming back will, I think it'll have a bigger impact on next year's budget, but not on this year's current budget.
Thank you.
This is two months out of 10.
Right. And, but it's really probably less than that, because June's usually a short month, you know.
Okay, any other questions on business? Okay, payroll warrants, we have a motion.
I have, I just wanted to just report quickly on the, on the grants and revolving. On the IDEA grant, we did get notified that there's an extra $4,000 coming to us on the IDEA grant. It was 856,000, it's now 860,000, so while it's not a drastic amount of money, we'll take anything we can get right now, so we're pleased to get the extra $4,000 from the IDEA grant. That is our largest grant that we, that we get annually. And then on revolving accounts, there's nothing great to report there, other than the circuit breaker at the bottom. I did say we have about $100,000, but, you know, Ms. O'Neill does have a couple of potential last-minute, 45-days placements coming out, so those, that could, that could even to that a little bit, but watching those very closely.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the IDEA grant is a federal grant for students with disabilities?
It is a, yeah, it's a special education grant. The majority of that grant is, so it's an $860,000 grant now, about 710,000 of that grant pays for our special education powers within the district.
Okay.
And the other 140 or so buy supplies, supplies, contracted services, trainings, different things that we can offset the local budget with.
Right.
And some of it actually has to go to some of our local, our local school districts also. We have to share some of that with St. Joe's, Odyssey Day School. I think just those two?
It's probably it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, we do have two payroll warrants.
We have a motion.
Will the school committee approve payroll warrants?
It's number 40 and 42 as presented.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
I have two gifts this evening, or we have two gifts this evening. The first one is from the Wakefield Music Boosters in the amount of $7,000 to defray the cost of supplies and bus transportation for the 2017-18 Winter Color Guard, or Winter Guard Program, I'm sorry.
Will the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $7,000 from the Wakefield Music Boosters to help defray the cost of supplies and bus transportation for the 2017-2018 Winter Guard Program?
Second. Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
And the last gift this evening, and the last item in the business, business items, is the, a gift in the amount of $1,650 from the Walton School PTO for the Walton School teachers to purchase supplies to enrich and enhance the classroom instruction.
Will the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $1,650 from the Walton School PTO for the Walton School teachers to purchase supplies to enrich, enhance, or classroom instruction?
Second? Ms. Fortier, second. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Akaya?
Suggestion?
Please.
Would the committee consider switching items number nine and 10 on the agenda, since we have our guests here, and since we heard earlier about the Learn Anywhere program, and might be a little bit, before we forget, get all the comments that we got?
Certainly. But I have no problem with that. The committee entertain that, like to alternate the agenda and discuss now the Learn Anywhere program? Okay, that's, that's to that.
Turn it over to me. So, I think Akaya is just going to move to the side for one moment. I'm going to invite our guests to come and be seated at the table. I'll introduce them momentarily. So, this evening, our goal, you're going to hear about Learn Anywhere twice between now and the end of the fiscal year. Tonight, this is representation from the Learn Anywhere Audit Team. So, this is going to be a presentation on the audit, and, and then they will tell you, they'll mention this as well, but we are currently developing Learn Anywhere surveys for teachers, for parents, and for students. So, there are going to be nine surveys that are going to go out, a pre-K to four, you know, a five to eight, and a nine to 12 and post, and then for each of those three grade bands, there'll be a teacher survey, a parent survey, and a student survey, with the expectation with, at the elementary school level, likely it'll be more the third and fourth. it'll be more the third and fourth graders that might be able to participate best in that survey. We intentionally waited until this time of year to do it because I think a really important point, particularly for our educators, is to see where, how well they are able to end the year with the curriculum. You know, what kind of impact did, or might that have had on their ability to kind of complete the curriculum on time and all of that. So that's why we're doing that right now. Thank you to Ms. Lehman and, and the other parents who commented today. I, you know, I know that I met with several parents, including two of the three that spoke tonight, to kind of just hear more about some individual experiences with Learn Anywhere. That was really informative for us, and we really appreciate that. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to this group of four. So with us tonight, we have Geraldine Traficanti, who's Assistant Principal at Wakefield High School, Jenely Coyne, Assistant Principal at the Galvin Middle School, Marina Zortzis, Assistant Principal at the Woodville School, and Michelle Offless, Assistant Principal at the Dahl Bear School. And then also seated behind them is Julia Sparano. She'll come up for Q and A. Julia is our pre-K to four on the Learn Anywhere team, supporting technology. She's a library and media specialist in the district. And my Learn Anywhere team did a tremendous job in kind of really helping us launch the program. So just remembering back what the audit is, is the, this is, this is, this team's work, our Assistant Principals and Directors in the district, they were responsible for following the Learn Anywhere days to kind of collect, you know, artifacts of work, you know, to kind of complete a very thorough audit of all roles, all grade levels, to really kind of understand, you know, you know, the curriculum alignment, depth and quality of assignments, you know, continuity across grade levels, across the district, those kinds of things, to really kind of just get that first, to get an overview of it. So what I asked them specifically to do tonight was to kind of present some of the artifacts of work to help the school committee and community just kind of get a glimpse at what it looked like at all different grade levels this year. So without further ado, let's turn it over to the audit team.
So thank you for having us. We're, you know, I think everybody's got a little bit of jitters, but, but we feel good about what we've done. We've worked hard together as a team. And thank you to Kim for helping us along the way, giving us feedback. So, oh, I forgot I have this thing. So we started off kind of thinking about and collaborating on what we felt like our successes were through our audit. So this is specifically from teachers that we talked to, parents. Some of the kids at the high school level definitely had some input. And so what, what we found consistently with the people that we spoke with was that they were happy to see that students were engaged on otherwise non-academic school days, which made us happy. And that was sort of, as some, as a member of the Beginning Planning Committee of, of Learn Anywhere, when we first started thinking about this, that, that was our goal, was to keep kids kind of engaged all the time and kind of get ready for the real work world, where you do sometimes have to work from home, not teachers necessarily, but now we're kind of pioneering that. And we also wanted families to truly share in the learning experience of their children. I think so often, all of that happens at school, and then they come home with homework, and it's kind of like, all right, how do I help? But now they're getting to see the, the aha moments that I think we really, you know, got some feedback from parents that they got to see that for the first time. And students can demonstrate how they are genuinely actively learning. That technology was, was so interesting. I kept getting emails from, from other people in the district saying, you know, oh, check out this video that someone just posted somewhere. I don't even know where that was coming from, that a student was doing their Learn Anywhere project. So teachers were using it, students were using it, we were using it. Jeff Weiner was kind of behind the scenes checking activity. That's not specifically in this, but we can certainly, I'm sure, get that for everybody, to sort of see how much activity was going on in the district using Google. Teachers had an opportunity to try things that they necessarily couldn't do in the classroom on a given day, which I think was fun and exciting. And the real-world experiences, as someone that used to, you know, teach math, I was interested in this, kind of seeing kids apply math rather than just writing it down or finding an answer at a desk. They were really doing math. And so, you know, really working on those, those 21st century skills that someday they're going to need when they become members of the workforce. So we, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you again, everybody, for having us. So our job at the elementary level was to kind of seek out the feedback from parents, teachers, and students, kind of like what Geraldine said. And these are just some artifacts that were shared with us along the way. These are students at the Doyle School, the preschool, about their assignments that they had to do. And the little girl on the left was creating a how-to story. So this was tweeted out in their class dojo. So parents could see this, the teacher of the classroom could also see. And then they just forwarded this to us. And the next one is a little girl with her grandmother doing a how-to recipe on how to make cookies. And then the other little girl was a how-to create some sort of math assignment with different things, artifacts in her home. And then on the bottom, it was students who read all these different books and tell about one of the stories that they could, you know, tell at dinner or right before bedtime. So it gave parents the opportunity to not have to be constricted to the confines of a school day, but be able to kind of do the assignments wherever, at whatever time in their house. And then these are the students from all four elementary schools. And it just shows some different assignments for ELA. And we have some videos here that are really cute on some how-to assignments. And the little boy that will play is how to build a snowman. And they brought snow from the outside and built it in the, in the bathtub. So if we could start that video.
How to build a snowman in the tub. First, my mom puts snow in the tub. First, we put on the mouth. Then we put on the nose. Next, we put on the eyes. And last, we put on the body.
And then below is a math assignment where a mom was, they were doing like a number story, and the students had to count out using whatever counters they could find around the house. If we could start that video as well, please.
And then.
How many candies, how many candies are in here?
Eleven.
Eleven candies. And, and then what are you going to do with them?
And then I have zero.
Now, how many are you going to give to your sister? So count out seven.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And how many do you have left now?
Four.
So you had eleven, and you gave away how many?
Seven.
And how many are left?
Three, four.
So seven plus four equals?
Eleven.
Good job.
Woo, y'all!
And then one of the assignments in the middle there was describe character traits. They were focusing on character traits in the classroom. So they had to read a book and think about what they learned from that book and listen to a story. And at a later time, if you'd like to see the link there, you can just click on Apple for Harriet, and it links you to a person kind of telling the story. So for students that may have difficulty reading, they could access it in a different way where the story was being read to them aloud. Sorry. That's okay. My clicker's not working. Perfect. Thanks. Okay, there we go. Okay. All right. I'm going to jump in. So Michelle Offless, I'm brand new, well, not brand new, it's, I'm almost one year in to Wakefield. So thank you for having me. I'm really excited to be here. So I'm just going to jump in and just share with you some of the elementary math and science activities. I have to say, I thoroughly enjoyed going through not only the pictures and videos we were getting, but just looking through some of these assignments online. I was just so impressed with the level. But you can see here, I think it was, the picture in the middle there was close to the 100th day of school. So one of the activities was, you know, find 100 of something, and this student used matchbox cars. Card games. I think it's a science activity there with the snow again, and then again, some more math games. I had to include the assignment down at the bottom there. One of our special education teachers had different assignments posted. And this one, I thought, talk about, you know, connecting to the real world. The students were required to go to a restaurant menu online and create a family meal, estimate the cost by using the menu. So really like connecting real world to, to math and even writing and reading. So if you could go on to the next slide, please. We also audited not just, you know, reading, writing, and math, but also PE, art, and music. I wish we had some of the PE on video because we did get a few videos in of the kids doing Go Noodle. There were activities where the kids were involved in different music. You can see here, the boys playing on their drums. And even, I think, the picture on the left, I believe she was a preschooler, and she heard the art assignment was to draw a picture of her stuffed animals. So she was able to kind of connect that with something happening at home. But we got videos of, of kids involved in PE, art, and music as well. Again, when you have time, you can kind of read some of the comments. And, you know, we've been collecting comments from, from all over, parents, teachers, staff, and, you know, even some of the younger students. But you can see here, we had a lot of positive feedback. I love the comment from the parent above because she really highlighted that it was nice for her. She has three students at Dahl Bear, mixed grade levels, and she just felt like it was really nice to connect with what they were doing at school. And she felt like it gave her a good sense of where, what her kids were doing and kind of what levels they were performing at.
Thank you. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Galvin Middle School. Jenely Coyne, Assistant Principal, thank you for having me here. The middle school is a unique place because we have such a wide range of ages of students. So we, our fifth graders really, you know, are more elementary school, and our eighth graders are moving towards high school. So it was kind of neat to see the way that teachers took this on and kind of gradual release of independence with this work. So some of the more exciting things that students were doing in class, the world language classes, if you want to click on the picture, used an application called Google Tour Builder. And they had to visit a foreign country that spoke the language that they were learning and build a little tour of that country. So some of the, you know, tourist attractions, foods, things like that. And it's, it's kind of like a little PowerPoint, but it takes you on a map, a little journey of that country. So it was kind of like a virtual field trip, which was kind of a neat experience for kids. You can close that one. Oh, back aside. Oh, boy. Grade five, we talk, we've been talking a lot about growth mindset in school this year. And one of the assignments that actually came from the book that a lot of us are reading, Growth Mindset Coach, was an assignment on famous mistakes. So our grade five science students had to pick a famous mistake, so something that was an invented, invention by mistake. So this student chose potato chips and did some research on how the potato chip was discovered, and, and just kind of reinforcing that notion that sometimes mistakes can be the best thing, because you get something really delicious out of them. So that was kind of a fun thing for students to research in grade five science, and really played in with our growth mindset. EdPuzzle is a really cool tool that teachers use. This is a music teacher. EdPuzzle is an app that you can kind of embed questions. So it's like a, teachers get kind of that instant feedback from students on how they're progressing and whether they're learning the material that they can go back next day and say, okay, you know, this group of students didn't really understand what was happening. This group of students did. How can we intervene and address? So throughout the video, there are little questions that the teacher asks the students to answer, multiple choice. And again, they get that instant feedback. You don't need to play the video. Thank you. And then, this was one of my favorites, our student support team, who we also checked in with, posted, yeah, they use Twitter a lot. And they posted things that kids can do at home to relax on a snow day. So learning about, you know, positive ways to exercise, yoga, relaxation, and meditation. They, you know, included some articles about taking self-care, taking care of yourself. So I thought that was a really neat way for them to interact with kids as well. All right, next slide. Oh, that's me. I'm sorry. I'm like so into the presentation. That's okay. So these are just some photos that families shared with us, and these are really fun to see. We got a lot of feedback from parents that kids just, you know, they kind of went into their zone, sat on the couch with a blanket, had the headphones on, and were working on their Learn Anywhere work, nice and comfy cozy on a snow day. The picture in the middle is our, one of our sixth-grade ELA teachers, Kristy O'Connell. She started experimenting with an application called FlipGrid, which actually ended up being something that a lot of our teachers used in the classroom after she tried it out on Learn Anywhere Day. And it's basically a speaking and listening tool. So kids can record themselves at home, answering a question about a text or an article, or, you know, something in context in the classroom. And they had a lot of fun kind of posting videos of one another. It's a closed site, so they can only access their classmates. It's not public. But she posted a question about a text that they were reading in class. And some of the kids that she noticed were super reluctant in class to share out loud, or reluctant writers, really did a nice job using this tool, FlipGrid, to present their thoughts. And then other teachers saw it on Twitter, took it on, and, and many teachers are using it in their classroom now, which is pretty cool. And then we did some Learn Anywhere challenges. We put out there to families, write a Learn Anywhere haiku. And this student went outside, did some math on the bottom, as you can see, and then had some fun with the snow. And that was kind of a neat way to engage students and families as well. So just some more sharing. Again, the middle school, we use, teachers and students use social media, you know, a lot. Some of our families were engaging with us on social media. And then we actually engage with each other. We did an ed chat online for a couple hours on one of the snow days, talking about growth mindset and thinking professionally, like how we could use this time to really grow as, as educators. So it was a neat opportunity that we, we may not have otherwise had, to really just sit down and connect with one another across the district as WPS educators. And just some more photos of artifacts. Mr. Sidroni, who's one of our counselors, posted some ideas for, you know, things are getting a little crazy at home, running of ideas for a snow day. Here are some great things you can do with your kids at home, working on building those relationships with kids and families. Our special education coordinator working, she tweeted, working on some things for her department on a snow day. One of our ELA teachers posted a snow day poem. So a lot of ways that teachers are trying to engage and interact with each other across the district, as well as their students and families. So it was a new way to connect and engage with students and families. And then again, when you, when you have some time, feel free to read through some of the feedback we got. We did reach out and ask for feedback specifically from families. And we did, you know, receive overwhelmingly positive responses, and certainly some areas of growth that we really want to work towards, moving this, this model forward. But, you know, we were really thrilled with just how positively students and families felt about the Learn Anywhere model.
All right. All right. So at Wakefield High School, we had lots of feedback from students who shared their voice and faculty members. But first, we'll go through some of the, the products that we received. And one of them's displayed behind me here. I noticed it when I went to VPAD, and I said, can I borrow that? So here it is. Students in Art I were working on a realism challenge with Joy Schilling's Art I class. They, some of the products are here, the video link, if you can quickly play that. We don't have to play the whole thing. They had to crumple up a piece of paper and then kind of get that to look real. And it, as you can see, it clearly is kind of hard to tell between the two. So if you want to click that video. So they would watch this at home. Oh, my God, that's loud. You can stop it now if you'd like. Goes on for quite some time. So that, that was one product that I really was blown away by. And I noticed a lot of students looking at it at VPAD, touching it to try to figure out which point was, which piece was the real piece. It's not clicking again, I'm sorry. In, actually, I'm sorry, the first, the, this presentation, I mean, this paper product was from Meg McKenna. And this one here is from Joy Schilling's Art II students. They had all different assignments that they could choose from, but this one I found really interesting. They were working on perspective and two-point perspective, and they had to pick a word, kind of make it come to life. And I thought the cold one was so appropriate for the day. And I thought the cold one was so appropriate for the day. Culinary art students were involved in Learn Anywhere. The first assignment, they had to make breakfast and kind of share out what they were doing by photo in Google Classroom. Different points, they had to list recipes and do the math to cut recipes in half and add recipes, double recipes, things like that. I loved this one. In Morgan Gianotti's art class, I got a lot of art. They had to use their sketchbooks and they were given, they had to create something from a movie or YouTube or Netflix and kind of bring that scene to life. And the bottom right-hand side is Bob Ross drawing. I thought that brought back some memories for me. Not that I was a good artist. And so some, some math assignments that I really was interested in, so many times on social media, Facebook, we see things like viral math. If you click the bottom left-hand side with McDonald's, students were given all of these viral math problems and had to try to sort of navigate through them and figure them out. Here's just a few examples. And then they had to post what they got and kind of debate that amongst each other through Google Classroom, along with the teacher. We found that on our first two Learn Anywhere days, which was the first week of January, I believe it was, it was kind of the perfect storm for high school. So we came back after vacation. It was January 2nd, was a Tuesday. We had one day of school and then two Learn Anywhere days, and we were getting ready for midterms. And we were all like, goodness, what is this going to mean for us? So a lot of teachers use the time to go the more practical route, prepare students for midterms, have them make up sort of study guides for each other, share them, quiz each other, share it out on Google Classroom, get feedback. So I really loved that, that real life, kind of in the moment, continue the learning. We're missing the days. How do we make them up? And there are some other, I'm not going to have them click on everything, but CK-12 is kind of a, how you can quiz yourself on whatever sort of concept you're working on. And the teacher gave very specifics, I need you to work on polynomials today, and this is what you're going to do. And you can click out of that. Thank you. There's everything you can imagine on these. Calculator scavenger hunt on the far right-hand side. I don't know if that one has a link. And then, you know, each, each little video has a link that you can click into, complex and imaginary numbers activities. So they watched the lesson, then they did the activity associated with it.
Intro to imaginary numbers. Now, imaginary numbers, contrary to their name, actually do exist, but sort of a weird concept that we're going to be getting into. So to start that out, let's do a little bit of a review on radicals. So say I say something like...
So if you just want to show the actual link to the assignment below, that would be helpful.
Okay, so.
So they then would watch this. So the video was originally embedded in this actual thing, and then they would have to answer the questions based on this. It created a Google form. The teacher had instant feedback to give the students based on that form and kind of see how many of our kids are on mark or way off the mark. So I thought that was a great idea. I don't think I would have thought of that. Okay, next slide. On the left-hand side, Ms. Hagerty felt that a lot of her students were really struggling with citation in using MLA format. And so she did her own sort of, she was way out of her comfort zone, if you ask her, but she did her own sort of presentation. And if you want to click Play, kind of a flipped classroom. It's going to play.
Hi. Many of you have been emailing me questions about your works cited pages. So I just wanted to go over a couple things so that you can submit your best work the day of the mid-year exam. So first of all, I just wanted to remind you that on Google Classroom, regardless of what your block is, you go to the About tab. You'll scroll down and you'll see this MLA materials piece, which offers you a sample paper. So you can see your heading again and your work cited page. And to make sure yours looks the way it's supposed to look.
So you get the idea. She sort of walked her students through, reminding them that all of the information is at their fingertips. This is how you get it. But more importantly, then went into, based on their questions and concerns about actually writing in this format, she gave them immediate feedback. On the right-hand side is our School to Life program. So one of the assignments that Caitlin Turelli gave the students to do was to create a PowerPoint on a topic of their choosing and sort of bring it to life for the, and I did receive permission from everybody that I, that I have used in this, to use their names. But, so she walked them through a trip to Vegas that she took last, I remember when she was going last year, she was so excited. She was going with her mom and her grandmother, and she was so excited to go. Jaden was so excited to go. And off she went. And here's sort of what they did while they were there. It was such a wonderful experience for her. And, you know, she worked with her mom on this presentation, and they shared it out. She offered lots of, if anybody wants to check them out, I have some other examples from some of our School to Life students working on their work. So I, part of my, how we did it at the high school was we split departments to audit. So I was, I was working with math, ELA, and Deb Ryan, our one nurse for right now, at the high school. And so I just kind of wanted to hear what they, what they thought. And Deb Ryan was just so thrilled that she could get all of the charts done that she needed to do, that she really has no time to do at the high school. So for her, she really used every, and if you know Deb Ryan, you know she used every minute of her Learn Anywhere days to work full days to get her work done. Beth Hughes, who was our facilitator at the high school, was able to field questions. And she also runs Virtual High School, so this is a very real concept for her. So she was excited to be able to help people out and say, oh, try this, give this a go. Teachers and students. You know, two, two others said that it was a productive day. So what I did was I created a Google form for some of my people so that they could anonymously give me feedback because I was nervous that if I was asking outright and attached their name, that I wouldn't get that honesty. And so some people said it was a productive day. Other people felt, you know, there were some struggles, and we'll get into that. That's our, that's our ending. But, you know, for the most part, it was pretty positive feedback. I did reach out to a few parents. And it's funny because one, Mary Ann Cohen, who gave me permission to use her name, shared positives and negatives. So her positives here and her negatives on a different screen. So, so she didn't just give straight-up positives. But she felt like she could really look at, yeah, thanks, I can't see that far away. She felt like there was, it was good to have an end date, but also that it kept them engaged all day long. She just felt like she saw some real positives with her two daughters that attend the high school. And Stacy Curran Conway, she, she is an educator, and she kind of went back and forth on Learn Anywhere. And I think in the end, she came back to that she was really excited that Wakefield was trying this out, giving it a go, is going to be open to suggestions and feedback, in that she does see positives, she recognizes negatives, and will be more than willing, I'm sure, to help us figure it all out in the end. And so Jenelle is going to talk about our growth mindset.
So again, something we've been talking a lot about as administrators and teachers in the district is just the idea of growth mindset. And it's something that we really took into account with giving this a try. You know, we knew that there would be things that we needed to improve, but we would never know kind of what those things looked like until we dove in, you know, headfirst and gave it a whirl. So some of our thoughts in terms of growth mindset are how can we improve the learning experience for students who struggle with independent work? So it's definitely something we recognize, that kids who struggle in school with working independently or who have certain learning needs that need to be addressed throughout the day, naturally, they would struggle with Learn Anywhere. So we really want to put that in the forefront of our minds for the beginning of the year next year. And an area of focus for our October 6th Professional Development Day will be, how can we be more proactively supportive of students who struggle to learn in any capacity? How can we expand Learn Anywhere concept beyond snow days at the middle school level? We have a variety of overnight trips, New York, DC. So we really want to try to think about how we can work the Learn Anywhere concept in with those outside of the school day activities, field trips, overnight trips. How can we better communicate expectations for teacher availability? We definitely found there was a range of availability of teachers and just kind of a lack of clarity for families as to how and when teachers might be available. So that's something we want to focus on for next year as well. And then, of course, kind of soliciting feedback from all stakeholders, learning a lot more about their experiences to really help us tweak the model and improve it, to get it to a place where, you know, we feel like it's an all-around success. So that's it.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Julia Sperato to join the team at the table. So Julia, as I said, is a library media specialist at the Woodville School. And so we have a three-person Learn Anywhere team. Julia, Erin Roy from the middle school, Beth Hughes from the high school, those three have really supported. They're the kind of go-to person for all of the educators in the district, each of those three grade-level band. So I thought she might be helpful to have here too, to answer any questions that the school committee has.
So thank you, thank you all very much. And obviously, Dr. Smith, for really bringing this project forward. It was really your initiative and the district's initiative to, to put us, to put Wakefield on the map in this way. So I think this has been a very interesting year. As a parent of two students in the system, it's a very interesting year. They aren't, they weren't, neither of my kids were reluctant participants. They were more or less active, more or less active participants. But one of the things I would like to, just to kick off, if I may, and certainly, Dr. Smith, even if you wanted the opportunity to address my question first, and certainly any of you, if you could comment on the thoughts, concerns that were raised here tonight, as well as those that have been raised throughout the year. I think we, as a community and as a school committee, have heard pluses and minuses throughout the process. And we want to be able to keep in, you know, in balance and in check those, the types of things to make sure that not only the feedback that you've received, but the audit results are in balance as well. So if, any, any sort of initial thoughts about, about, about any of the concerns that we've, we've heard and you've probably each experienced and have reacted to sort of live. But I think it might be something nice for the, for the community, as well as obviously the community here.
Yeah, I'll start.
Please, please do, Dr. Smith.
Absolutely. So as I said earlier, the surveys will be going out. And I think when we get hard data, I think that will also be really helpful. I think Ms. Lehman asked about quantitative data, and that, and that is to come. We should have some really good, solid quantitative data around the feedback surveys. But I think the first bullet point here really touches on what we heard tonight. And I think if there was one overriding theme of where we need to improve the most, it's around children of all ages who struggle independently to complete work. Often, those students have difficulty in school completing independent work. They might need a lot of support. And it's, you know, then those students at home will also have some difficulties working independently for a variety of reasons. So we kind of, actually, this is, I'll give the credit to Assistant Superintendent and soon-to-be Superintendent Doug Lyons. He kind of said throughout the winter, you know, the biggest theme that we're hearing in terms of where we need to improve is that these kids who struggle, what do we need to do for these kids before the snow day happens, on the snow day, and then after the snow day? You know, really hitting all three. So we've talked a little bit amongst the leadership team, and that's why they included it here, about as we come into next fall's professional development opportunity, I think, again, it's October 6th. Just coincidentally, it's the same day, that there'll be time spent, that we really want teams to talk about that piece. I think also, you know, just the availability of the teachers. The teachers are working throughout the day, but I don't think that we were clear enough, as Jenelle said, on, you know, if you want to, you know, talk with the teacher or if the student wants to talk with the teacher, is there, was there clarity, again, not, you know, across all grade levels, you know, consistent clarity about how and when. I think that was a place we could, we could do a better job with. Although I read the, there were hundreds and hundreds of comments that came back from the Galvin Middle School parents. And as Jenelle indicated, like, really overwhelmingly positive. And one of the most positive comments at the Galvin Middle School, I will say, is that they, that anyone who reached out to a teacher or the Learn Anywhere, the library media specialist, someone got right back to them almost immediately, and they were very impressed with that. That was a very common theme, at least there. So that was really good news. And then finally, I think some of the comments came from kind of our youngest learners, and that was the trickiest space because we want to make sure, I'm remembering very distinctly at the Walton School conversation with Principal Byrne and the teachers, that the teachers learned a lot from this first try, this winter. They said that, you know, kind of having gone through it once, they were, a couple of the teachers said they were a little bit surprised that the children, you know, they really worked on certain concepts in writing. And then the work that students typically do in class was a little bit richer and fuller than what they produced at home. And they realized, you know, geez, if I had maybe made a little video that I could have posted and prompted the students at home, you know, and said, don't forget, make sure you do this, or don't forget, make sure you do that, that that really would have helped the kids in terms of their product coming back. So I think that the teachers learned a great deal on their first try as well. So I think there's lots of places that we can really improve. I think the, the surveys will give us a chance to even learn more. I've had lots and lots of conversations with parents, as well as educators and students. So we're kind of learning every step of the way. So that's kind of my, my answer. And I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in on where, on those, maybe the comments that the parents made at the beginning and what, what you might have to say about that.
Just doing this presentation and getting to dig through what we learned across the district, I mean, I would have never known what was going on at Doll Bear until next year when I have students there, right? And so I think I learned so much just talking to my colleagues that I think sharing that out with our teachers to say kind of like, here are some great ideas, like that Flipgrid was amazing. And I was so interested in it afterwards that I got on and I was like, what can I learn about this? And so I think there are so many great tools in, in everybody's individual toolbox. How do we make a big kind of dumping ground for that, maybe on the Learn Anywhere site, that we can then expand kind of our repertoire of what we're offering students? And, and to some degree, start to make things pop up at elementary that then they'll see again in middle school, that then again they'll see in high school when they come up to us.
There are certain things too, that I really noted in this presentation. The more familiar you are with the curriculum, the more you can understand what the teachers are asking for. So it's just thinking back to the comment about, you know, geez, you know, is, is an assignment that may have taken a kindergarten student, you know, 15 or 20 minutes to do, is that like a worthwhile opportunity? And I'm remembering the little boy who made the snowman, and he did his how-to video that you saw. I noticed that he used the transitional language. Did you notice? He said, first, I did this, you know, next, you know, and finally, you know, and this is, you know, kindergarten student learning how to go through that step-by-step when you're writing that type of a narrative. So it just reminded me again that, and I knew, you know, when I did, you know, some work out front on this, that we were really trying to explain conceptually, it's not about quantity of minutes, it's about quality of learning. And those are two different things. It's not a one-for-one, you know? So I think that's also really conceptually important, and that's hard to wrap our heads around. If you've ever worked in the virtual learning space, you mentioned Beth Hughes as a virtual high school teacher. She's really used to that, and her students are used to that. You know, you really kind of have to understand, you know, kind of conceptually what's happening. So just thought of that when you were talking.
And one other thing, I guess we should have mentioned, I was also impressed with how up-to-date the assignments, especially at the elementary level. If there was a field trip, the teacher seemed to update the assignments on Learn Anywhere to make that connection. I think it was Black History Month, so then I noticed a lot of assignments went up that connected with, you know, different, you know, Harry Tubman and assignments to kind of bring that all together. So I was impressed. Winter Olympics, there were assignments that had gone up that kind of all connected it. So I liked how teachers seemed to go on frequently and make changes to kind of keep it all up-to-date, which I was impressed by.
I also think it gave teachers the opportunity to provide additional enrichment experiences that they may not have gotten to in the classroom, something they wanted to try but didn't have the opportunity to, you know, just because of, you know, staying on pace with curriculum. And, you know, it was a really good opportunity for them to say, you know what, I've been learning about this tool, I want to give it a try today and see how my students do, you know, and then if it works, bring it back to their classroom.
Now, it wasn't lost on any of us that we had six snow days this year. Of course, we had to have like one of the worst winters ever on our first try. I remember back talking with people and saying, you know, typically on average, we might have two snow days. have two snow days, maybe three. That's your typical average kind of situation. So we really were thrown into the fire the first year, and I think, you know, considering the fact that we were really learning and, and, you know, learning on the move, that that was a big part of it, too. We had a lot of snow days this year, so.
Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Callanan.
I find it interesting that the, yeah, we certainly got a wide variety of comments. But the, the bigger concern seemed to be from parents at the elementary level rather than the middle school or high school level. And I, I'm trying to understand the, maybe the why of that. You know, were our expectations of what the kids could accomplish at home too low? Were, did the, do we need to spend more PLC time or district-wide, so like all the fourth grade teachers come up, you know, have more time to plan these things better, maybe during our PD time leading into the winter? Like, why do you think it was more elementary concerns than other, other grade levels?
I wonder with feedback that I received from staff. I think you are right, and some teachers went on two different ends of the spectrum, where they gave a lot of, you know, heavier duty assignment, because they felt like, "I need to make sure that this is equivalent to a school day, not six hours worth, but enough to have that kind of satisfy that, that amount of time." Where others, this is the first time we're kind of doing this, let's, you know, we don't know how the parents are going to react, we don't know how the kids are going to react, are we going, is the technology going to work? We got no power a few days. So I think there were kind of differences in what the expectation was, where if we maybe had more time together to work with our grade-level teams, it could be more aligned in the district and kind of common assignments from school to school. At Woodville, we did get some negative feedback on, I think, parents had a hard time not realizing how much effort they, or, you know, support they needed to provide their child, and they're not used of being the teacher. And I think students at the elementary level might fight back a little more with their parents versus their teacher, and they needed more of their help at that time that maybe their parents couldn't give or dedicate to. So that's kind of the feedback that I, that I heard, and we tried to quickly kind of resolve that, where the assignment wasn't due the next day. We had our paraprofessionals in the classroom work with students that were unable to complete it, or didn't have a device at home, and they, we filtered time in the wind block, which is what students need, to kind of work on them, on the assignments, so they could complete it.
I, I guess we might need to try to set expectations a little differently. I, I think parents may not understand, I mean, although perhaps, you know, that their own children, they, they should understand what it's like trying to get them out the door in the morning. But how much time is probably spent transitioning in an elementary school versus a, a high school? I, I think there's a lot more transition time trying to get them all lined up to go to, to the music, so I don't know how many minutes that takes, but it's, it's, you do that three or four times during a day, and then it, and their attention spans are so small that there's a lot of transitions during the day. And so how much time on learning there is in an elementary level versus a middle school level or high school levels? Same length of the school day, but how much is time on learning? I think, I think it's probably a different number. And we, we maybe just need to set those expectations a little bit different, too.
I, I do think that there was, you know, a real effort by the elementary school teachers to get it right, and not really having done it before, really knowing, you know, how much is too much. We don't want the parent to have to become the teacher. That's not the point. The idea is, it's wonderful if parents and kids have the opportunity to engage, and we all, we did see a lot of, you know, wonderful videos and emails that I saw and received where they really enjoyed, you know, engaging in the learning activities together. We did see that. But we wanted, we didn't want to put that on parents either, that you have to become a teacher for the day. So I think it's just probably going to take us a little bit longer. I think you're right, Mr. Callanan, the teachers just need some time now to say, "Okay, for year one, how did it go? Was it enough? Was it too much?" We also, you know, I think it's still really important that it's a fun day. I think we really made some efforts, particularly at the elementary school level, but honestly, throughout the district, to really engage a way that was just a little more enriching, a little more fun. You know, the key is, we want our kids reading, we want our kids writing, we want our kids doing some math, we want our kids exploring, you know, and, and all of the different aspects, but maybe in a way that feels a little bit different, because at the end of the day, we still want snow days to be a day that, you know, everyone's really, you know, kind of enjoying it a different way as well. So really just kind of getting that sweet spot. It's good, maybe especially at the elementary level, will take just a little bit more conversation, but, you know, learn from our successes and where there were challenges.
I think also at the high school level, and at Galvin, we use Google Classroom so much that, you know, if, if students have a question for their teachers, they're not going to go ask their mother, or father, or whoever's at home that day. They're going to go right online, and they're just going to ask. And teachers are pretty regularly checking those things. So I think because of that, that may have been a reason for the discrepancy and maybe more negative feedback at the elementary levels than at, at the upper grades. Students can kind of handle the issues on their own a little differently.
And just one last comment. I, I think we don't want to lose sight of the fact that these snow day assignments should be probably more compared to what would have been accomplished June 20th through June 27th, not those January days.
Very true.
Because those are the days we're not making up at the end, and I don't know how much gets accomplished June 24th either.
Maybe it's a little different.
I think that, actually, that is the single most important point, is that, is that the, the whole idea of really making an effort to address this, is school districts all around the state are really grappling with the kind of learning, the quality of learning that happens on, poor Andover is going to school until June 28th or 29th, 29th? That's, and, and a Saturday or two Saturdays? So two Saturdays and school till June 29th. And everyone really struggles with the kind of learning that's happened them. That's also post the MCAS. I mean, if you want to keep kids engaged with reading, with writing, with math prior to the assessment, you know, really, it's not going to do you a lot of good on June 25th or 26th. So that really is the most salient point, that this is, how can we create some real-time learning that is better than what is happening on a, on a June 26th or something?
Ms. Foudier.
Thank you. So yes, I do work at Andover, and I'll be in school for the rest of my life. So I have two questions. The first, it's, the first is more of a comment. I have two high schoolers, so when they, when it's a snow day, frankly, I don't see them, because they are bombarded with work. And in a lot of time, a lot of ways, it's, I don't know if this is your experience with your kids, it's almost a little bit more than what they would have done had they been in school, because they drop a block. And some teachers, so this might just be a little FYI, some teachers who wouldn't have had that class on that snow day, still give them an assignment.
That was, that was an error. That should not have happened.
I wasn't sure. So like, "Well, you better just do it, because the teacher assigned it." So, so that sort of leads me to my other question. In terms of accountability, or, I don't know if that's quite the right word, who's sort of monitoring these kinds of things within each school, within each department, is, is one piece? And then the second question, which relates to that, is there, there have been reports from some parents who have, say, two elementary kids, and, you know, one teacher is providing kind of new stuff, and it's the one that's updating, because they just did a field trip, and another one is providing kind of the same old, same old. And granted, we had six days of snow, and so may not have had a whole lot of PD time to prepare. But I'm just curious, like, who sort of monitors that kind of stuff?
That's us. Yeah, and, and we kind of did random audits of, I know at the high school, they did departments. At the middle school, we took on our upper and lower house teams, and each snow day, we'd check in with, you know, randomly check in with a team to see what they assigned, you know, what their student, what feedback their students were giving on the assignments, what they found in terms of completion, what successes and challenges they faced. So we, we didn't necessarily, you know, look at everything that was happening across the building on that one particular snow day, but we did make an effort to reach every team at least once over the course of the six snow days that we had.
And I'd like to add to that, that, so I meet with the, myself and Doug Lyons meet with the principals monthly, and anytime we got any kind of a feedback, a piece of feedback that was a concern, we brought it to the principals as well, you know? And one was, you made me think of another piece, was that, that we didn't really prepare for, was that a lot of students didn't do their homework the night before the snow day, because they said, "Oh, good, this is a snow day." But then they found themselves in the position of, this is mostly secondary school, but now I've got all of my homework to do that I should have done yesterday, I didn't do, plus all of my Learn Anywhere, and they ended up feeling quite overwhelmed. So we were able to communicate that back to the principals to really alert teachers, just to remind students, you know, like kind of the homework piece, do, do your homework at the time, that you should do your homework, so you don't find yourself in that position, that kind of thing, so. But any of those kind of things, like you said, the audit team would be able to pick up on a lot, but certainly, you know, any of the feedback the principals get, or Mr. Lyons and myself, we would interact with each other throughout and try to keep giving feedback to teachers, keep improving, even in real time. I mean, we're certainly looking forward to improvements towards next year, but we wanted to improve as we were going along as well. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Leacker.
So one of the assertions earlier, one of the parents earlier in the public comment period was that we hadn't adequately considered students on individualized education plans, students with special needs. Can you address that, or the panel?
Yes, I, you know, we, we went to great lengths to prepare for that, but I think, you know, I mean, when you think of the entirety of pre-K to post-academy, we have, when we talk about the range of needs, the range of differences, the range of families, family situations, all of that, I think we prepared as best we could, but we've learned since then. So this evening, we heard from Rhiana Rossi, who I met with, she and her husband in person. I mean, anyone who reached out, I, you may have seen that I asked them to come in, because I thought that that, always when you sit with people face-to-face, you can really understand, better understand, you know, you know, even more than you might just in an email. And I, I remember learning a lot from that conversation, you know, what certain learners might need that we need to provide more of. So I think that really, you know, we, we certainly thought a lot ahead, you know, in advance, but I think we're learning as we go as well.
So, yeah, thank you. And that's, that's what I, that's what I had hoped. But I guess the, as I was listening to the, the subtext, if you will, of a lot of those comments, the question I had is, is, is it, is there a fundamental flaw in this whole approach? Meaning that, that no matter how hard we try, in other words, let me, let me see if I can frame it this way, the structures that are in place on a traditional school day have been developed over time in such a way that they've, they've created an environment of equity that is impossible to replicate in a snow day environment?
Well, I think what I would say is what, you know, this is what all educators are talking about in terms of trying to, you know, advance to this kind of work. And I think everyone's talking about this, not just Wakefield, is that, you know, remember, in, in context, Learn Anywhere day is the day that the student's at home. But one of the reasons that we're trying to create space before, during, and after the snow day, is there are students who need more than other students, just like in any other, I guess, basically, let me just take it from a little different direction, because this is what I'm trying to say, but maybe I could say it a little more eloquently, thinking about virtual high school. So in a, in a matter of equity, if we do online learning, we have to have the ability to support all students to be able to take an online course, right? So all students, from an equity perspective, need to be able to do that. And that is not in real time, it's not face-to-face, it's online, right? So kids will be graduating from high school, going into careers in college, where they may need to recertify online, they may need to independently do some work online, or interact in an online course. So I think part of our mission here is, how do we prepare students for that? And some kids need more. So let's say we have an English-language learner that might need some support. They're going to need support before the snow cancellation day, on the cancellation day, access to that ESL teacher, perhaps online, for some question and answer, but after the day as well. And I know that, I think one of the comments was, you know, just giving people more time isn't the answer. Well, no, it's not just about, about giving people more time, it's about making sure that students have access to everything they need. This is not like a timed program. This is, you know, we have the time and space, it doesn't all just occur on the snow day. So students can engage and richen, you know, richen quality assignments, and if they need more or something different by different professionals, that they'll have the opportunity to do that. But I, I think inherent in this is the equity that we're providing all students with this type of opportunity, which they may need for career and college readiness down the road.
Thanks.
Ms. Prusell.
Thank you for your presentation, and I'd like to thank the parents also for commenting. I have three kids in the Wakefield Public School Systems, two at the Galvin, one at the high school. I do have one child who's on an IEP. So for me, the Learn Anywhere for her was really challenging, and I know that the presentation that was given today was great and positive, but I do kind of wish that it included some of the negative comments as well, because it really enables us to work together, to figure out a way to make some improvements. So I'm just wondering if, when those surveys will be either have conducted, or when we'll re-receive them, and if we'll get an opportunity to look at them?
So yes, so I was going to take that, because as I said, in June, on the second June meeting, the school committee will have access to the entirety of the surveys, and that's the opportunity. In defense of these folks, I asked them to prevent, to present artifacts, so that you could understand what kinds of assignments happened at all different age levels. The purpose of tonight's presentation was not to replicate the surveys, which have not occurred yet. So I just want to be clear about that. I asked them to present like artifacts of work, can we just give, first, really set the stage with, so what happened on those days? What did, you know, what did students engage in, what kind of technology was used, and all of that? That's what I asked them to do. And then I came tonight to say, you know, where the surveys will go out, and in June, we'll get all of the feedback from students, from teachers, and from parents. And I think that'll be the best opportunity to really kind of look at some hard data, and we'll certainly leave comment sections for people to talk a little bit more.
So when that data is back and we review it, what's the timing or the schedule to, like, review it over the summer? And then when do you decide if it's actually going to happen next year? And if it is, then, you know, what are the steps to make sure that we communicate to parents, especially parents who are concerned with their children who have, you know, struggled to work independently? I mean, I just feel like, will that happen over the summer? Will everything kind of be set in concrete and done, so that on the first day of school, people know what to expect if we have six more days of snow next year?
Let's hope we don't have another year of six days of snow.
It was kind of good, actually. You know, because you had an opportunity for everybody to really see if it's going to work or not, rather than just focus on two days.
The most extreme conditions, yeah.
You know, I think after we see the surveys, I would like to come back with Doug Lyons with some kind of a recommendation to the school committee on kind of what next, and kind of looking forward to, not even just one year, but the next few years, what we might want to think about. I think, so I think that would be appropriate to do that. And then with the assumption that we want to continue to work on this, going back to Ms. Callanan's point, the, the point of this is to try to figure out how to do better than June 27th learning, that if we come up with a recommendation, then I think it's incumbent upon us to work, again, in the very early part of the fall, September and October. We told the teachers this year, be ready to go in October, because you never know what could happen. For some, some schools did have some cancellations in October last year, so we, we have to be ready to go. I think it was, I think it was Ms. Lehman that mentioned- year, so we have to be ready to go, I think it was, I think it was Ms. Lehman that mentioned the parent forum, one of the things we talked about a little bit is having a parent forum at the beginning of next year, while it's fresh in every, you know, everyone's minds in terms of, okay, in the upcoming year, what do we, what do we need, what do we want to do, but I think there would be a lot of advanced preparation, you know, really front-loaded, as far as like the mid-part of the summer, we wouldn't do, want to do a lot of communicating over the summer, because I would always worry, that's the time that we shouldn't necessarily communicate to parents, because people are on vacation and so forth, I think it would really be early September and October would be the times.
Thank you.
Ms. Whither.
Thank you, I also just want to thank everyone, superintendents and the audit team and the parents for the feedback, I guess I just had a comment first, was that I really love how the program provides continuity in learning, I know that even on half-days, kids can get a little like it's a vacation day, you know, they have two and a half extra hours, and everyone goes into a sort of a different mode, so I think continuing their learning, you know, for a portion of the snow day allows them to transition a little bit easier back to school the next regular day, and that they are continuing right along, you know, with what is in line in their curriculum in part, and I think my next question, Kim, you've already probably spoken to this, but I've heard a lot of feedback from working parents, and I'm sure you've had a lot of feedback too, and that will be addressed in the survey, but just wanted to sort of highlight that, because I've heard a lot about that, where parents don't always have the snow day, and they don't get to stay home, and they do have to travel to work, and how do we support our children remotely, and, you know, sort of not police them, but manage and make sure that they're doing the work at home, and, you know, just, just, I just wanted to put that out there, and just see that, have you heard that kind of feedback, and is that something that we're going to look towards, I'm not sure, you can't fix the problem, because, you know, the parents have to go to work, but how, how can we support the students, you know, when they are at home, or maybe they're at, you know, with their babysitters or daycare professionals?
I have a couple of comments, but any one of the panel?
Yeah, but as I say, I think it speaks to that before, during, and after, you know, students who struggle kind of is a big umbrella, so it may be a student that, you know, if mom's not home, to tell them that you need to get started on your work, then they're just not going to do it, so it's about that before, during, and after piece, and how do we support students when they come back to school and the work is not done, what are we, what's our response, and, you know, are we all on the same page as far as how are we responding to this, and what strategies can we give families to kind of motivate students when they don't have access to them during the school day?
You know, a thought that I have on it too is, so this window was a really interesting one for, really for this question, because there were the first two days, I don't know if you remember, it was really cold, and it was a really big storm, and everybody was home, and I think we got lots of positive feedback on those first two days, hey, this is great, it's going to work out great, then the third one was not so happy, the third one, I think, had as much to do with the fact that, you know, when, so when you're a superintendent, Ms. Lyons, when you're a superintendent, you have to make that call, it's, it can be a very tricky situation, so you may remember the third snow day was the day, it was during mid-year exams at Wakefield High School, we have, we use a forecast module, that I talked to Rick Stinson, DPW, Townsfolk, Chief Police, Chief of Fire, we, you know, talk, and we look at this particular precision forecast for Wakefield, and it consistently said, you know, three to six inches between 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM, that is like the worst forecast, because it's so, you know, I thought to myself, well, if it's three inches, and I cancel school, everyone's going to be really upset, but if it's six inches and I don't cancel school, everyone's really going to be upset, so this is like a no-win situation, one of the things that I think's important for me to even state now to the committee is that, and to the public, and I said this as much as I could, and I gave this advice to Mr. Lyons, I said, you know, at the end of the day, you know, if you're going to make a mistake, err on the side of caution for people's safety, because I would rather be the superintendent that everyone's really angry with, that we only got three inches of snow and I blew it, I didn't get the right call, because parents have to go to work largely, that's a lot of, you know, you're arranging for childcare, it's very difficult for parents, but I would rather be in that position and take some heat for that than to have school, because I was afraid to cancel, and then have someone hurt or worse, and I was very aware that at Wakefield High School with mid-year exams, we would have some 150 to 200 student drivers coming in and out during that day as well, and that just seemed awfully risky to me, and one of, a community in the area did have a car accident that day from some young people driving, so I, so at the end of the day, some people were not happy, a lot of people weren't happy on that day three, because I think, you know, I think there might have been a perception too, like, well, now that she's got Learn Anywhere, she's just going to be canceling left and right, so I just think it may be important for me to say, I think it's important that the superintendent always makes the snow day call based on safety, period, and, and it's partly safety, and it's partly what the DPW says they can do, now, I think it was day, the fourth snow day might have been the one where there were a lot of high winds, and there were a lot of branches down, and it wasn't so much that the snow had really started to taper off, as that the crews were diverted from doing sidewalks and side streets and lots, to having to do a lot of power lines down and tree limbs down, there's a lot of cleanup to do, you know, before they finish the work, so at the end of the day, if the DPW, and they do such a good job, and Rick Stinson's always very clear with me, and a lot of times we talk at 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, and he's usually can tell me by about 4:00 AM whether they can pull it off or not, and, and if he says we can't do it, we can't safely open the schools, then we can't safely open the schools, I mean, that is what it is, and our workers are out there, those men and women are out there all night, working really, really hard, so I think, you know, some of the angst comes, like I would say, you know, you, and this also speaks to why you wait a little bit till you kind of get through it all, before you go back and survey and do that intake and think, you don't want to catch people on the emotion of the, this is fantastic, or this is terrible, you know, people will, you know, there'll be the kind of both things happening, and I think we kind of need to step back from it now and say, okay, overall, with all we've been through, what was it like for us, so I think that, you know, I mentioned earlier that what we don't want, is we don't want parents to feel like they have to become the teacher, it's not the parent's job is to be the teacher, so whether our parent's home or not at home, it's not their responsibility to make sure that good learning happens, or quality learning happens, that's our job, and to try to create the space for our kids to do that, and again, all kinds of kids, back to Mr. Leakas' question, you know, how do we create the space for all kids to find some success on these days, from age three to age 22, you know, with all the many, you know, types of kids that we have, so, and learners that we have, so we're working on that, and I think what we do want parents to do is engage, if they are able, support if and how they are able, but really, the onus is on us, and at the end of the day, the onus is on us, we're the educators, and I think we are learning and continuing to learn and grow.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Massey.
Just a comment, I just want to thank the parents for speaking out today, earlier in the session, I think it's always important to get that extra feedback, and it kind of gives us a chance to kind of find, maybe some, consider some extra middle ground, for example, like the special education factor, you know, maybe consider something like towards the end of the school year, a couple extra day or two, something like that, or maybe after-school type of thing, before a big snowstorm, really getting them prepared, just kind of considering different factors like that, and I think with anything, adjustments can be made, I mean, it's year one, so, but in general, overall, I'm a big fan of Learn Anywhere, so, just for a few different reasons, number one, I think, gives the kids a chance to do something different than what they would usually do, kind of step outside of what they're, they're usually doing, and give them real-world kind of projects and examples, I thought there were some great examples on the board today, also, family engagement time, I think that's very, very important, very underrated, and just kind of gives them a chance to see their learning in action, and then finally, just like you said, Kim, just gives them a flexibility to also go outside and actually enjoy the day a little bit too, so, I think it kind of combines everything into one, and hopefully it doesn't reach six next year, but I'm looking forward to seeing how next year goes, and how the surveys come in, and thank you guys for the presentation, you guys did a good job.
I do want to mention that one of the days, it might have been day number six, I've got them all labeled out here in my mind, but I came into the office, it took me a while to shovel my own car out and travel up to Wakefield and get in, and so I worked for a couple of hours from home, and then I, and then I drove up, and by, I want to say, 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, the hill on Wakefield High School was filled with kids sledding, and I thought, now this is how the Learn Anywhere Day should go, the kids, you know, got some work done, you know, engaged in their work and their learning, and then they went outside and played, and that is the ultimate balance, and I, I did send out a note, if you remember, to families ahead of time, just to say, it's perfectly okay to have a bucket of popcorn and watch some movies, or, you know, go out and play in the snow, I mean, that should be part of the experience as well, I think we can get, and if you're a parent of a teenager, if your child sleeps in till 11:00 AM, that's what teenagers do, like, don't panic, it's okay, like, that's, that's, you know, and that is sort of part of that experience of learning, and the other thing is that more often, more and more often, I want to say it was either the fifth or sixth day, I remember the, you know, governor coming on and just saying, you know, if you can, have your employees work from home, and the highways were just empty, you know, so I think, just in general, societal kind of norms are shifting a little bit, I remember back, you know, I'm really getting old, but at the blizzard of '78, I was still in high school, and, you know, back in those days, the essential employees only, and we did that for a long time, but now, really, most people have the capacity to work from home if they, you know, in many, many professions, so I think, you know, we see a lot more of that too, it wasn't just kids at home, lots and lots and lots of adults were at home that, those days too, except for day three, sorry about that.
Are there any other thoughts or comments?
So let me just, you know, wrap it up a bit, and, and again, I too, joined my colleagues in just about every comment that's been made, certainly very much are looking forward to the, to the next step of the feedback and the surveys, the audit, the audit results, you know, we continue to be on a path of improvement, but this is, there's such deep value to everything that we've talked about tonight, especially the concept around, how do we make, how do we make the experience better, and how do we make it more profound, and how do we, how do, how do we, how do we provide equal services or equal opportunities there, so I think that we'll be looking forward certainly to hearing more come the end of June, and then come the beginning of the, of the new school year, one thing I would like to also say is, the third bullet or the third star, I think, may be on that list sort of the greater, you know, among equals, that the, that often communication is the foundation of the beginning of any problem solving, I know that as a parent, I had the, you know, the luxury of some school committee, you know, awareness as a backdrop, but I also know in talking with lots of, you know, other parents, and even friends of my kids, other students, that that was something that was, that was, you know, not well-known about what to expect on the other end of the, of the computer at, you know, 11:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon, but I will say, I think the longest gap of time that either of my kids waited to hear back from a teacher was like maybe 10 minutes, I mean, it was really, there was, that active engagement throughout the day was, it was known, it was there, it was, was not these gaps of time, it was, it was quite profound, so, that was impressive to me in many ways, but communicating those, whatever the expectations are of the students, of the teachers even, and, and for what the parents should be able to expect, as that bullet speaks to, is certainly, you know, an actionable item in rolling out next year, so we certainly, again, thank you all for your time, thanks for staying on the late hour, thank you, Ms. Leakas, for suggesting we move this up on the agenda, but this is some really good work, very creative, this is, this breaks another mold, and, and that, that's exactly where, where we want to be, continuing to make learning better. Thank you all.
And two other quick things, Julie, and our Learn Anywhere team, I just want to say thank you, because not only were the teachers there for kids, but our Learn Anywhere team was there for teachers, which was just as important, and the teachers across the district said that our three Learn Anywhere team folks were at the ready the minute they struggled, they were there, so thank you for that, and then I also just wanted to, I will bring, when we do the surveys, I'll bring the actual data, because I just didn't gather it for tonight, but I have given Learn Anywhere to, I would say, no less than 20 districts in Massachusetts, just basically gave them the kind of freedom to use anything and everything they want, I said, this is not copyrighted, this is to share, we're on a journey, we're trying it for the first time, but many, many school districts, urban, suburban, rural, eastern Massachusetts, western Massachusetts, you know, what's that, Andover, you know, are really intrigued with the level of detail in this program, you know, and, and that is just such a tribute to the educators in the Wakefield Public Schools, I'd love to take all kinds of credit, but the credit really goes to the, to the teachers, and to the principals and assistant principals, and all of the educators in Wakefield that really made it go, and really, really appreciated, so, thank you very much for your presentation tonight, great work.
Thank you.
All right, and my last item, I could probably just do super quick, do you want me to just finish off superintendent's comments, so I just wanted to alert the school committee, I just thought it was important that I just let you know where we are in the accreditation process, a lot of people have been talking about Wakefield Memorial High School, the statement of interest, looking at the facility, I wanted to remind the committee, especially with a couple of new members, that we are on accreditation warning at Wakefield High School because of the facility, and as you may know, the accreditation process is a 10-year cycle, and believe it or not, it's coming around again, I thought about hiring the new principal, and, and I just broke the news story the other day, I said, so, Amy, as you come in, we are on, so 2019, which is this coming school year, next school year, is, will be the year that she and her team will need to engage with the accreditation folks with a lot of preparatory, and Carolyn, you'll be there, just kind of prepping, going to workshops and training sessions, that will be next school year, then 2020 will be the self-assessment year, and that's when the high school takes, will go through all of the standards, and it's a pretty extensive process, things have changed since the last time, in terms of what that process looks like, I think it has improved actually, which is great, that's 2020, and then in 2021, the accreditation happens again, and it will have been 10 years, now, the other really important point, so with my longevity, I've been there, I was there for 1991, when they instructed us to fix, you know, replace the roof, replace the HVAC system, you know, fix a lot of the facility, ADA compliant, all of that, I was there in 1991, I was there 10 years later in 2001, when they told us to replace the roof, replace the HVAC systems, you know, make the ADA compliant, do a lot of the facilities works, our science labs are starting to get really outdated, and then, of course, I was principal in 2011, when they came in after 20 years, and we, they were still telling us these things needed to be done, and that's when we were put on the accreditation warning, so the reason I say that is we are coming on 30 years, and three years, when, when they come again, it will have been 30, since the first time that they have told us how important it is to correct the facility, now, it's not as easy as just waving a magic wand, and everyone knows that, and it's one of the reasons they give you time and some space, but it is certainly going to be their expectation when they come around this next time, that we have corrected it, this partially is what gives me hope, that I do know that the MSBA also recognizes that if you're on accreditation warning, that that's a really big deal, and they certainly don't want us to lose accreditation, so I do, it gives me hope that we will enter into that partnership with the MSBA soon, as they see that deadline approaching, but I just thought it was my responsibility to share that with you, you know, especially where, I have been so involved all of these years before my own departure, just to kind of keep you up to speed, and how important it is that we address Wakefield High School, the facility, and whatever we have to do to do that, and that's it for my remarks, thank you.
Thank you very much, and that is certainly a good, good reminder, and good information for everyone in the community, especially, so you didn't tell the incoming principal this is part of the negotiation, right?
I did not, I waited until after she was hired.
There's way to sign, and everything, sign the dotted line, and, oh, by the way, yeah, okay.
She actually.
Smart negotiating there.
Yeah, but you know, I have to say, she, you know, kind of enthusiastically embraced it, and then actually, I came in as principal in the very similar situation, and it actually was really powerful to go through the self-assessment with my faculty, so I said, you know, really, you know, seize that opportunity, because it really is a wonderful opportunity, so.
Very good.
Okay, so moving back to, to item number nine, under chairman's items, first is the superintendent's contract negotiations and update and possible First is the superintendent's contract negotiations and update and possible vote. As the committee knows, we are prepared for a vote this evening, and we're prepared to bring forward to the community what has been a couple of days' worth of successful conversations and negotiations with Mr. Lyons. The committee met last Thursday evening and empowered the vice chair and myself to meet with Mr. Lyons, which we did yesterday. And then we met again earlier tonight in executive session as well, and responded to those concerns that were raised. It was a, it was a very, very healthy and positive exchange, and in true and professional form, I have to say, it wasn't very difficult a negotiation. And I want to thank Mr. Lyons, you know, for that, and certainly members of the committee as well. We have a contract document that the members have seen twice now. Will be attached to the permanent records for tonight's meeting. But just to disclose the primary terms, we have offered, Mr. Lyons has accepted the following terms. I think, I think I perhaps speak for everyone most excited about the first. We have offered, and Mr. Lyons has accepted, a five-year contract. I think that is hugely representative of the commitment that we're each prepared to make to each other, first and foremost, to the community itself. I think we have had the wonderful pleasure of having, you know, three superintendents in six years, but nonetheless, we've had three superintendents in six years, and I think, I think we are all looking for something more. So anyway, it's a five-year contract, FY '19 through FY '23, a starting salary of $171,000. Mr. Lyons has agreed to a 2.5% cap, which would be linked to the teacher contract negotiations. So the incoming superintendent's contract raises, if you will, cost of living increases each year, would be attached, linked to where we settle with the teachers, which I think is incredibly, incredibly representative of the work that we see ahead. As an aside, that is exact same language that is in Dr. Smith's contract. And as an even further aside, this was something that we did not negotiate with Dr. Smith. She brought to us in her professionalism three years ago. That's not language that we even thought of asking. That is something that you brought to us out of your, nothing but professional expectations of yourself and your staff. Number four, as a primary term, is 15 sick days, very, very similar, exact, rather, with all district employees, 20 vacation days and a cap of 35 vacation days. And because Mr. Lyons is an existing employee, we certainly felt we didn't want to have any loss of benefit. So those are the primary terms. The contract itself is nine pages. It is a representative template to what both Dr. Smith has now and what Dr. Schreik had previously, and is representative work of the legal teams from MASS and MASC. So with that in mind, we have a motion. Mr. Cowan in.
I move that the committee approve and sign the draft employment agreement with Superintendent Designee Douglas Lyons. That is before the committee.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Just thank you to Mr. Lyons for, you know, making, helping to make this an easy transition for us. You know, I think we're all very like-minded, and the biggest focus was, you know, was going to be best for the students of Wakefield.
Indeed. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Lyons. This is now the actual official vote. Not that the other one wasn't, but this really, really ties it together. And I also want to echo what Mr. Cowan said. If this process, not only as ourselves, as a team, but working with Mr. Lyons, is representative of the next five years, we are going to do nothing but bigger and better things.
Great. Okay, thank you. I just also wanted to add my thanks to you, Tom and Chris, for your hard work on this and the detailed work. And also, as part of that, wanted to ask if the committee was also comfortable sharing as part of the public record tonight and with the public and the media, the comparison data that you had.
Oh, certainly.
With the, so you were kind enough to give us comparison data with our dark districts around superintendent compensation and also regional districts, too. And I think that's important information to share with the community.
Well, certainly, so to follow up on what Mr. Leakas is referring to for the community, as part of the research and getting ready for our negotiations, we had done some research in that light. I also want to thank Mr. Piffling. I dragged him into, into re-research mode with me. So we did, we did some of this together. But we pulled together a total of 24 communities, 12 demographically similar and 12 geographically proximate, and compared exactly the type of superintendent salaries, what the total enrollment, what net school spending was, just to make sure that we had some sort of apples-to-apples comparisons. I know, I'm a large, big fan of talking about communities that are demographically similar, even if they're not actually next door. Lots of people in the community, it's understandable, want to talk about Reading and Lynnfield and Winchester, because they're, you know, we all know each other from these communities, even though it's not necessarily a very good point of comparison. So in the demographically similar districts with regard to superintendent salaries, out of 12, we are squarely in the middle at, or darn close to squarely in the middle, it's an even number, but at number seven, with regard to superintendent salary ranges, for a superintendent serving four years or lower. In the geographically proximate districts, we are number, we are the fourth lowest in terms of superintendent salaries. So I think that is compelling data. It will certainly, it can certainly rest and reside in the minutes of tonight's meeting. I think that's an excellent idea, and I thought I'd just take a minute to explain what you were talking about to the, to the community. But it was certainly useful data in our, in our conversations. Thank you. Okay. Moving along, excuse me, subcommittee, oh, nope, I have one more thing. 9B, subcommittee reorganization. What I would like to do, just to mention to the committee, this isn't, this is nothing but a prompt. What I'd like to offer is an opportunity for us to have sort of a conversation about what some reorganization may look like, with even the possibility of reorganizing the committees themselves. We have had this committee structure for, the existing committee structure for probably four or five years now. It's rather obvious, but maybe it's not representative of the types of things that we're experiencing in fiscal year '19. Maybe it's, maybe we need to focus in other areas. If we've got three standing committees right now, it's certainly likely we're always going to need to have a finance and facilities, and certainly, next year with contract talks, we're going to need a labor relations, but maybe there's something else, maybe there's another piece that we, as a committee or the community, would like us to look at or examine. So I'd like to throw that out as a prompt, as an opportunity for us to be, to be thinking about what subcommittees we may want, what areas of focus. Maybe it's a committee that only needs to have a life of a year. It could be a committee that exists to do a special task in fiscal year '19, and it may not have to have some permanency to it. But nonetheless, I was thinking that this might be an opportunity to sort of rethink the subcommittee structure. So I'd like to just throw that out there as a prompt. Certainly, any member, reach out to me individually, shoot me an email, we'll have a conversation. And then probably, not probably, in the June timeframe, we'll have these conversations in a more, in a more open way. But I'll be thinking about that. I think there might be some value to rethinking what next year might need to look like. Now, subcommittee reports. Finance and facilities. Mr. Cowan in.
Nothing new to report. The, only, Tom Meeting did approve our supplemental funding from the Fed Stabilization Fund, so that $175,000 will help balance this year's budget. And Tom Meeting approved our full budget, I think, was it prior to our last meeting?
No.
So our full budget was approved as well for, for next year, so we're good to go.
Indeed, we are. Very good. Labor and personnel, there's really nothing to report outside of what we've already been doing for the last six months, or five months, I guess. Anyways. Policy and planning. Ms. Fortier.
We are planning on a meeting Thursday, this coming Thursday, 5:30, at the Galvin, possible, most likely, yep. And we'll talk about wellness committee that we're reconfiguring, and then we're going to have Kristin Morello speak with us about the meal charging policy. We just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. And then we were going to discuss the use of language when referring to the chair. Yep, so that's the plan.
Very good. Okay. Number 12, future agenda items. What is noted here is our next meeting is Tuesday, May 22, two weeks from this evening. That, as a reminder, is our meeting in Boston. The information will be sent out in an email, but we will be meeting at a location in Rosalindale.
Offspring, is it?
No, we have a different location this year.
It's a different location. It's, I believe it's actually Jamaica Plain.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
But, and the particular details will be submitted, obviously, to the committee. So two weeks from tonight will be our annual meeting with Medco families, so. So we will not be on the air, we will not be live in two weeks, so we'll have to just take pictures, I guess, and share them, share them with everyone. But selfies. Are there any, any other comments under future agenda items by the committee? Yes, Mr. Cowan, I mean, Mr. Leakas.
So I was talking to Senator Lewis over the weekend, who told me that he was really excited because the Chapter 70 Foundation budget bill is moving pretty fast through the Senate, and he's hopeful that it's going to get into the, into the House and actually come up for a vote within the next couple of months. So I thought, it had been a while since we'd had the legislative delegation in for a conversation with us, so I asked him if he'd be interested, and he said, he said yes, and I suspect Reps Broder and Wong would be as well. So wanted to just throw that out there, and maybe we can get them on the agenda.
Sure, maybe for one of the two June meetings.
Yeah.
I will send them an invite.
Great idea.
Thank you. Yeah? Anything else? Oh, Ms. Guida.
Yes, I just have a further question to the, to the meeting in Boston.
Yes.
Do we also welcome our Wakefield families to attend that?
Of course.
For the same sort of public comment section, or if they just like to listen in to our Boston families?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, so that's a great question. So it's a, it's a full meeting of the school committee, it's not an abbreviated meeting. We conduct routine business, whatever, whatever is before us that night. It's not abbreviated, it's not shifted, it's not adjusted. You know, the Boston families will be very participatory, there's usually a nice, excuse me, a nice crowd, and it's usually a night where we have some conversations around that curriculum. Is that--
So not this year. We actually, we did that already. So we have other exciting things to discuss.
Very good. To be, to be shared. Very good. But yeah, certainly anyone, it is a full meeting of the committee. It is not a, is not a half a meeting or an abbreviated meeting at all. Okay, anything else under new items? If not, school committee comments going around the table. Ms. Purcell?
I'm all set.
All set. Ms. Leakas?
Just a quick thank you to the voters at Tom Meeting for their support for our budget and for the Special Education Stabilization Fund. Once again, we really appreciate the support of the community.
Here, here. Ms. Fortier.
Yep, I echo the thanks as well, so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Massey?
Two things, Ashley. Thank you for talking to Senator Lewis about that Chapter 70 bill. That's excellent news. Two is, I just want to compliment whoever's idea this was, but I was driving to work, I think, last Wednesday, and I noticed all the kids walking to school. Was that your idea, or is that a Massachusetts thing?
I can't take credit for it, but it's the, what's the name of the walk to school day? National Walk to School Day.
National, right.
Yeah, and so Wakefield participates--
Yeah.
--in it, which is great. So the PTOs and the principals of the elementary school put it together, it's fantastic.
Oh, yeah, that was a beautiful day for it, too, so, cool.
Ms. Guida?
No further comment.
Okay. Mr. Cowan in.
I have nothing to add.
And nor, and nor do I. But thank you all very much. Motion to adjourn.
I move the school committee adjourned its meeting of Tuesday, May 8, 2018.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Opposed? Passage unanimously. Good night, everyone, and thank you.